Maple Avenue?
I'm trying to think.
Or is that War Two? Or is that War Two?
We better wait.
No, Maple would be Two.
He specifically blamed the Aldermen.
We're gonna start our meeting in about ten seconds.
Lester, they specifically blamed the Aldermen.
All right.
No, I'm just kidding, I don't know.
You're War Two, right?
I'd like to call our meeting to order and ask, do we have some scouts in the, in the audience? Oh, well, we got some students, why don't you come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Come on, right up front here. Yep. There's the flag over there, okay guys? You know the words, right?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, the role?
Belzak?
Here.
Clistic?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Marques?
Here.
MacGyver? Shower?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
A six present, one absent, and you have a quorum.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the Aldermen have announcements of a general nature to start out? Then I'd offer it to the audience if anyone, this is an opportunity for someone to address the council now, instead of waiting through the whole meeting, because we have another time for people to come up and speak to us. And it doesn't have to be on an item that's on the agenda this evening, but if you just want to bring something to our attention, this is the time to, to do so. And let's move on to...
I haven't got a, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right.
So this, we can do audience...
Oh, yeah, yes. Alderman Clistic, do you want to fix that podium to...
Turn it?
Turn it a little bit better? Thank you. Thank you.
Mary, you could have done that.
You need the engineer then, there's...
Well, that's right, he's the engineer. He's the engineer on our City Council show.
Thank you, thank you so much, and good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mary Sullivan. I am a 23-year resident of Darien. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the Hinsdale South. I know that there's gonna be a proclamation made, but to just speak out on the referendum that's gonna be on the April 2nd ballot supporting the schools. I have two graduates of Hinsdale South and a current freshman. I am a very proud Hornet parent. As you heard earl, you will hear in the proclamation from Mayor Weaver tonight, our school has achieved some great successes, most recently, but for many, many years. I'm hopeful that the continued success of our high school can be maintained, but it is imperative that we, as the city of Darien, support our academic institutions. Our excellent schools define our community. It is what draws newcomers and people to seek out Darien as a nice place to live. That is what brought my family and so many other families that I have gotten to know over the last 23 years. The school board and administration has faced a daunting task of doing major renovations to the aging structures. This cannot be done without the support of taxpayers. The last time residents supported an increase was over 50 years ago, when Hinsdale South was first built. Our schools are in disrepair and outdated and need to be updated for 21st century learning. Major renovations need to be done now to make our schools a safer learning environment and accessible to students with disabilities. I urge each of you Aldermen and City Council members to encourage your constituents to get the facts, and they can get that directly from the school district website or by visiting our website, which is d86votes.org. There's a great deal of misinformation circulating out there. Scare tactics meant to mislead residents and make them fearful of increases in their taxes. Our goal is to present factual data on why this $139 million referendum is so important to our entire community. It is imperative that it passes on April 2nd, 2019, in order to stop the drastic budget cuts that will be proposed for next school year. Please vote yes for District 86 and help our students continue to succeed. This will have a major positive impact on our home values and our community with a successful referendum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks for having me speak. Good evening, my name is Joan Brandise. I'm a 12-year resident of Darien and before that, unincorporated Willowbrook, Hinsdale, whatever they call it, and a proud parent of two Hinsdale South alumni. I'm thrilled that the city of Darien has, has this proclamation tonight to celebrate the excellence of Hinsdale South. Thank you to all of the Aldermen and the city administration for doing this. I'm also part of the committee working to pass the upcoming referendum, as Mary talked about. Many people are not aware of the critical nature of this referendum and what it means if it doesn't pass. The school board was recently forced to make $42 million in cuts to programs like football, swimming, marching band, cheer, National Honor Society, and the list goes on and on. Since the last referendum failed, they've had to pay for critical life, they have to pay for critical life safety repairs and upgrades to avoid liability for our students and our community members. If this next referendum does not pass, these cuts will remain in place. If, however, it passes, most of the cuts will be reinstated. Here are some facts that people don't know. Hinsdale South has the original boiler from 1962, when JFK was president. It takes an entire week, right, students? To heat up the school. The students and staff wear jackets, blankets, and gloves in their classrooms for the entire week. The STEM engineering classroom has the same electrical around the perimeter of the classroom, which prohibits the students from working in groups, because they have to be on the perimeter of the classroom to plug in their CAD laptops. The band has expanded from 80 to 150 students. They don't have the space to store all their instruments, and they cannot practice together. Theater must rent sound equipment, because the, the original equipment is too old to even use, and they can't afford all-new equipment. The South Library looks like the elementary school that you and I used to attend, instead of a library and media center like other schools have. The doors are not fire-safe. There is no lockdown ability linking police to the schools in case of an active shooter. If this doesn't pass, home values will certainly drop. Why would a couple of kids, why would a couple with kids move to Darien when they see the community doesn't support the schools? Ask any realtor, and they will tell you that schools are the most important, and high schools especially, the main reason people pick a destination, like Mary said. There's a ton of research that states if a community supports its schools, home values go up by 6%. Think about the effect Sterigenics already has had on home values, especially with the news coming out today. And then add on to it three failed referendums on top of that. Why wouldn't that couple move to Downers Grove? Or Elmhurst? Or many other surrounding suburbs, since they just passed referendums and it's obvious their community cares about their...
Mrs. Brandise? I'm sorry, I failed to announce that we have a three-minute time limit on, on speaking to the City Council.
Okay, I have one paragraph to say.
I would really appreciate you winding it up very quickly.
Yeah, I will. My son is living his dream playing D1 football at the University of Dayton and his good friend at Notre Dame because of wonderful experience at Hinsdale South. They can't believe what's happening to their schools. Past school boards kicked the can down the road and made incredibly irresponsible decisions that put us here. Please ask your residents to get the facts on D86's website or go to d86votes, and get on the email list for ongoing information.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Oh, okay. Now, I, I will make the announcement that I should have made at the beginning, that we have a three-minute limitation on, on speaking.
Perfect. I've never done this before, so I don't have any notes or anything, but I'll just make this quick. My name is Kathy Hen. I am a 21-year resident of Darien and a proud Hornet parent. My daughter, Alexis, is here. She has had the privilege of being part of marching bands and learning swimming. And I am very, very proud of Darien and Hinsdale South for everything they've given her, all the opportunities she's had. So I just want you guys to know that I am very appreciative of the staff at Hinsdale South. She wouldn't have had these opportunities without them. They work so hard, and I hate to see them have to go through anything difficult with this whole referendum situation. My daughters have been fortunate, they've had small class size, you know, and the opportunities with... Everything that they're thinking about eliminating is detrimental to the kids. They need something to do. By taking all that stuff away, we're taking opportunities away from them, too. She has the opportunity to go to college now and participate in band, because she's had a wonderful experience. And I'm, I can't tell you how grateful I am to have a school like Hinsdale South. When I got married, 21 years ago, we moved to Darien because I wanted Hinsdale South. That's why we stayed. And I want my son, who's going to be a freshman next year, to have the same opportunities that my daughter's been fortunate enough to have. She has friends in the same sport. I've made friends with the staff and with other parents in the activities she's been a part of. So I'm hoping that that continues. And again, you know, support the referendum, spread the word, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, then let's move on to, the next item is approval of minutes, and guess what? We don't have any minutes to approve. Our city clerk is, is on vacation, so let's move to receiving communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Kenny?
I do, ma'am, ma'am. I received a communication in church Saturday night from Mrs. Ryan, and I'm missing her first name and the address. Just concerned about, she had submitted a handwritten letter for somebody she thought was of good candidate for the city of Darien, and was just nearly shocked that, you know, that it wasn't, you know, taken out of. And there's, I guess, there's some other follow-ups to that, but that's the communication I got.
Any other communications to share? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received a communication from Karen Packard, 7721 Farmandale Drive. The concern she has is that Farmandale Apartments located on Farmandale doesn't seem to shovel their sidewalks, but we've learned that that is not required from the city of Darien. So I will send a letter on behalf as, as an Alderman, ask them politely if they can. But I'm just curious, do other cities require residents to shovel sidewalks? Or is it just normally that we do it as kind?
We don't. We don't have a requirement.
Okay.
It did, with the city, I don't remember, years ago, but at some point, there was a similar... Not in many communities, they haven't...
Okay.
Some of the communities might, it might, or it's like, freezing... You see, you know? One way into patient, disability issue. There was a number of items talked about and decided not to...
Okay. I mean, Karen didn't mention that Farmandale Apartments does a good job cleaning around the apartments, just not the sidewalk, like the public sidewalks they do not clean, so.
That should be a management company.
Yes, yes. I'll, I'll reach out personally, so, and, you know, reach out to them.
I got an extra trouble on it.
I actually did my block twice, actually. I'd go up and down the street, 'cause I have a lot of older residents that I actually will just pile the whole block, actually. So I got an awesome snowblower, so...
You should invest in some equipment there.
I know, I know. And I got a quick question for District 86 here. I, I received information with regards to currently there's no after-school activities, that those have been cut out, is that correct? Can you, someone comment on, on that? Or clarify for the, for the audience as well, because that question has been brought up many times to me, so I'd just like some clarification.
Um, with the proposed, the, um, like this, that they will remain until the referendum, but it is not all after...
Okay. And another reason I asked that question is that, just doing some research online, one of the things I found is that after-school activities, especially between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, help reduce crime as well. People, you know, mischief, people have nothing to do, kids have nothing to do, just keep them busy after school. So, you know, we do policing for the city of Darien. We have an officer that goes to the high school every day, so I think that will have some effect with regards to policing, policing as well. I don't know if Chief Thomas might have a comment on how after-school activities, you know, his work in the city of Aurora, if after-school activities help reduce crime in that area or not, but just wondering if you have any comments with regards to how after-school activities affects crime and mischief.
There is a, a few different studies that correlate and called latch key kids. And Aurora, we started a program called MySpace, and we're currently in all junior highs with about 3,000 students participating. And we take students from Aurora University and other places, mostly Aurora University, nursing programs, social, sociology programs, psych programs, and those type of things. And they provide after-school tutoring. It's turned out to much be more like a mentoring program than a tutoring program, but it's very nice to have those in. There are so many programs and so many projects that were put together to drive down crime. I can't equate any one program with it, more, much more of a holistic approach.
Just in general, though, it does keep, you know, students busy. Being, growing up in Aurora area, I got in mischief from time to time, you know? So if I had more after-school programs, you know, I had 54 in my graduating high school, so we definitely didn't have the opportunities or funds in some of the suburban schools. Final comment I had, thank you.
Any other communications to share? Then let's move on to the mayor's report, and the mayoral proclamation has a history to it. I know Alderman Vaughn reached out to the, the, the principal at Hinsdale South to introduce himself as, as the local Alderman, and then set up a meeting where Administrator Vanna and Mr. Vaughn went out to meet with, with the principal. And out of that came the proclamation that I'm going to read this evening. It's been a long time in coming, because the meeting was in December, but here we are. And I'm very pleased to be able to read the proclamation. Whereas Hinsdale South High School was founded in 1965, is home of the Hornets. And whereas Hinsdale South was ranked by Washington Post as 15th in Illinois on their Americans, America's Most Challenging High Schools list. And whereas Hinsdale South was ranked by U.S. News and World Report as number 20 on their Best High Schools in Illinois list. And whereas 28% of Hinsdale South students are designated as Hinsdale Scholars by making the dean's list all four quarters and earning AP credits. And whereas Hinsdale South scored ninth out of 670 high schools in the state on the 2017 Illinois Science Assessment. And whereas Hinsdale South offers 46 honors courses and 28 AP courses. And whereas Hinsdale South Class of 2018 includes nine National Merit commended scholars, National Merit semifinalists, three National Merit finalists. Three students earned National Hispanic recognition for their scores on the PSAT, NMSQT, and 75 Illinois State schools representing 22% of the graduating class. The average ACT score of 25.2, which in the state average is 23.9, so that's higher than the state average. 97% of the 2018 class are college-bound, and the class of 2018 was offered over $22 million in merit-based scholarships. And whereas in 2017, 498 students took 1,261 Advanced Placement examinations, with 73% of those students earning three, four, or five on at least one test, making them eligible, eligible for earning college credit while still in high school. And 71% of those test scores were three, four, five. And whereas recent highlights include, excuse me, recent activity highlights include third in state competition for band, Business Professionals of America includes 10 students in state, one student, fourth place at Nationals, state competition for our chess team, choir individual, all-state honoree, the deaf academic bowl, ninth at Nationals, drama IHSA, sixth in the state, our economics team, third in state, Illusions Art Magazine, two national awards, Investment Club, which donated $10,000 in profits to charity, Journalism Individual, third in state, math team, North Suburban Math League Champ in state competition, speech team, IHSA State Competition, Individuals, third and sixth in state. Vespa Yearbook received three national awards. In music, there was four all-state musicians. In Special Olympics, basketball was third in state, track gold medal and gold medal winner. And whereas recent athletic highlights include WSC Gold Conference Champions in badminton, boys' baseball, boys' basketball, football, boys' golf, girls' soccer, boys' swimming and diving, and boys' tennis, IHSA Regional Champ, Champions for Boys Cross Country, softball and wrestling, IHSA Section Champions for badminton, IHSA State Competition, badminton, competitive cheerleading, competitive dancing, and IDTA State Champions, Boys and Girls Cross Country, Boys and Girls Gymnastics, Boys Tennis, which is state, sixth in state, Girls Tennis, which was fifth in state, Boys and Girls Track and Field, Boys Water Polo and Wrestling. And now therefore, I Kathleen Weaver, Mayor of the city of Darien, do hereby proclaim February 6th, 2019, as Hinsdale South High School Day in the city of Darien, and recognize Hinsdale South's many contributions to our community. Is anybody in the audience to accept this proclamation? And we do have...
Thank you so much, and we celebrate Hinsdale South every day. I have with me Senior Lily Bone, and she is our District 86 Board of Education Student Liaison, and she would like to say a few words on behalf of the student body as well.
Okay.
Yeah, as a student, I would just like to say thank you. It really is an honor to have your, like, the community's support and to know that we are really valued in the community and just being recognized is a really nice way to keep doing what we're doing and just keep up the excellence. Thank you.
Why don't you come up and receive the proclamation?
Take a picture? May I approach the bench?
Yeah, come on up. Joan, come up.
Well, yes, okay, I can do that.
There's the official cameraman.
You know, hey, Mayor Weaver? Alderman Vaughn should be in this picture with you, since he was very instrumental in getting this done.
You guys should also stand behind all of them. Everybody stand up. Alderman, stand up.
Come on, get up, get up there.
Everyone else get behind them in the, under the city of Darien thing.
Come on, guys, one, uh... What's behind him, that's why I gave his name.
You guys too, come on. You keep the streets going, big guy, both of you do. You keep them safe, you keep them clean.
There we go, that's a good analogy.
Awesome, thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Wow, I needed a drink of water during that one. That was a long one. Okay, let's move on to the city clerk's report, and there being no city clerk, does the administrator want to cover any report?
She just left, no report.
No report, okay. Let's move on to the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. Included, we checked it, it's requested from the previous meeting, are, are two proposals from GHD. And the proposals are for air sample testing relating to the Sterigenics facility in Willowbrook. The two proposals differ in the scope of services and price. Basically, one of the proposals is collecting air samples three days a week over a 30-day period. The second proposal collects air samples actually every day for, for a month, and those prices range at $68,000 up to $108,000 for the everyday test. This is a same company that has been involved now with the Village of Willowbrook and the Village of Ver Ridge, and it's been doing the ambient air testing. Again, the City Council asked to bring some proposals forward. It was a brief discussion during the work session, and it, the consensus was to bring these proposals back to the budget discussions. Those start actually in a couple of weeks, and talk about those at that time. And I'm sure there'll be more comments from the councils, but that is a summary of the issue.
We did. During our work session, we had a pretty lengthy, actually a pretty lengthy discussion on, on the whole subject matter. You know, we've, we've heard a lot from residents, you know, that we should do something. We are doing something, because we are joining the lawsuit that was filed by the, by the state's, DuPage County State's Attorney and the US, the Illinois Attorney General against their Sterigenics. We are, we are joining that lawsuit, and we are constantly on, on alert to all the, and require the EPA to do testing in locations within the city of Darien, and we, we are awaiting that information. So we, we feel that we're doing a great deal to benefit our residents, but I, I think that the council, what we were hearing earlier in our discussion is, we, we... And I'll let you, I'll let the Aldermen speak to it, but from what I'm hearing from you is that we want to give some, some assurance to the residents that we have done some testing and we can give them results. My only concern is that, once we get those results, are we doing any good in, in, in giving out that information? And then, once we have that information, where do we go from there? That is the biggest challenge that we have, because our hands are tied. It is totally in the hands of, of the EPA and, and our legislators to get involved and, and close this place down. So we felt, and the council members can now speak to their issue, that they, they feel the need that we should do some testing, so I'll open it up to the floor.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to add and remind everybody, watch. City Council did pass a resolution several months back. Basically, it was a statement on behalf of the City Council, and I think in essence, basically, that statement said the Sterigenics facility should be shut down. So I think, just so the residents get, again, a little bit of a backdrop, where the council's coming from now and where they were several months ago in terms of, of that request, really, as part of the resolution.
We, we've taken every step that we can at our level to, to address the issue on behalf of our residents, but is there any of the Aldermen that want to speak to the issue? Alderman Marques?
Yeah, I think you made a mayor. I wrote an, an email to Mr. Vanna stating that I felt that we had a responsibility to determine whether or not the air quality in Darien, in selected areas in Darien, was impacted by the ETO, release of ETO. The testing that was done for Willowbrook tested Hinsdale South High School. It didn't test Mark Delay, didn't test Community Park, didn't test some of the other areas. Personally, I think we have a ethical responsibility to test, do ambient air testing to determine whether or not we have these conditions here in Darien. I realize there's concerns over what we will do with the information. Nonetheless, I think we have a responsibility to find that out. My email included my proposal that we at least put this in our budget discussion starting February 20th, that we start to... We definitely don't want to scare people, but at the same time, we want to be honest with residents with regard to the quality of the air in Darien. And so that was my reason for submitting my email and asking for the $108,000 test, which would be every day for 30 days.
Alderman Vaughn, did you want to say a few words? Well, I didn't know if you...
Well, we, well, I think, as we look at the consultants, we also have to consider that we can't just leave it open-ended, open-ended discussion, hey, there's ETO in the air, there's high levels of ETO, but we have to directly point it to something or connect it with something, and I think that we have to take it a step further when we do have these discussions, and if it's approved and go forward, that we can't leave it open-ended. We have to directly link it to something, or what's called as these high levels of ETO in the air, so, you know, we have to keep that in mind, too, so.
Anybody else want to address the issue? Alderman Belzak?
So, previously, we've said that, as a city, we want Sterogenics shut down, and so the reason I'm supporting having this discussion in our budget is to make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck. If we are going to, if our ultimate goal is to shut down Sterogenics, is spending money on testing where we want to do it, or is there something that'd be more valuable in getting the end result that we want? So, I'd like to, us to form a plan and have a goal at the end of the day on what we're going to do before we rush and do the testing. I don't want to throw money at an issue that maybe throwing money at it won't do it. So I'd like to actually have a go on how we're going to get them shut down.
The $108,000 that we talked about during our pre-council session, I'm in favor of, especially during the budget process, but Tommy brought up some really, really good points, and that is, is that if we're going to turn around, we got a lot of questions that we want to have answered before we even take it to the next step, and we have to be able to address those questions. And if we're going to go ahead and do some testing, we also want to have some, you know, we want to have some direction that goes with it, so that's where I stand on it.
Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this question's probably more for the consultants, but could we reach out and ask sort of their recommendation? Because I see three times a week for a month, and then every day for a month. In my mind, I was thinking three or four months, checking once a month and once every two weeks. So, what I'd like to get feedback from the consultants is, what is the advantage or disadvantage, the disadvantage of doing it every day, every three days, or just doing it once a month in February, once a month in March? I mean, you can do 30 days of results and divide it by 30 days, right? Theoretically, you know, next month, March, April, May. So I'm just, you feed, ask them if it's more advantageous doing it longer, maybe three, four months, and checking once a month versus doing 30 times every single day? Because one month seems a little short, to be quite honest, I'm thinking about it, but testing every single day seems very expensive and maybe not as valuable, so maybe reaching out to them, saying, what's the advantage of doing it for five months and checking it once a month? What's the advantage of doing it every single day for 30 days? What's the advantage of doing it every third day? So, just some of that feedback, I think, would be interested feedback back to us, you know, advantage, disadvantage of doing it every single option, you know?
Because one of the challenges I see, because I tend to drive around Stergenics when I'm in the area, and I think that they, you can't tell, because you hear people say it's a 24/7 operation, 24/7, but it's not. You go by there, times you don't see the trucks out there, and other times you do see the trucks out there. So you don't actually know what Stergenics' schedule is about when they're actually, when they're actually, you know, working, you know, full first, maybe they're, maybe today they're at 80% of their capacity, maybe, you know, and then Thursday they're at, you know, 20% of their capacity. So I don't know, I don't know, and your science is, you know this better than I, but I just think you've kind of got to monitor a longer, a bigger, a bigger scope, just because, just because of how their business is actually run.
That's a very good point, so. It's just, so it's just questions to ask the consultant that I think are very valid, so.
Noted, and I will reach out.
And along those same lines, I, on Saturday, January 26th, I happened to be reading the Tribune, and Michael Hawthorne is the journalist that's all over this, the ethylene oxide. He seemed to have inside information all along, which was, which has always been fascinating to me, but in this article, I became very upset in reading a quote from one of our Darien residents in the, in the article, and I will, I will read the quote. It says, "Our children are going to schools where early results showed high levels of this deadly carcinogen, and no further testing is scheduled." I happen to have talked to all of the superintendents of our local schools, our Darien schools, Darien 61, 63, and 66. None of them are doing testing. So therefore, there cannot be results that this individual, actually, the individual is Steve Leopoldo, the Darien resident who made this comment, that there are high levels of deadly carcinogen in our, in our schools. And I think the most, the thing that upset me the most is, to spread this type of misinformation is egregious. It is, it is harmful to our residents who are already concerned about this situation, that now they have this information from a resident saying that all of our schools have done testing, and all of them have high levels of ethylene oxide in them. So, I think this, this was very, this was very improper for this resident to make these statements, and we have to be very careful that the information we give out is factual. We cannot allow people to make up statements like this and disseminate them and scare our residents even more than they are already concerned about the issue. So do you have enough direction?
Yeah, and I believe, you know, the consulting company would be available to meet with the council, speak to the council. I just didn't have them at this particular point, and if, you know, they're out of state, but they're obviously around us in Illinois all the time, but if not, they could certainly be available on account as well. But, yeah, really, I'm going to talk to them about, basically...
What, Alderman Clistic?
Yeah, that's really the only, you know, the question.
The benefit of the...
What they recommend, and, you know, we talked a little about, a bit about what they recommend, and I think it, you know, it depends on what we're looking for. But again, I, one of the suggestions by testing every day for the month versus every three days was Stergenics cannot change their production habits. So if a company knows that the testing is being done Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, maybe on Thursday, they, you know, they enhance production. So the every day certainly is better. I mean, you know, the more testing you get is, the better. So, you know, the question really is, well, do you do a little less and spread that out over more months? And that's what I'm...
Yeah, the, my, my question, and, you know, and what you were suggesting is, would the results be any different in February than in March? If they're, if they're high in February, they're probably going to be high in March.
Yeah, I was looking at the taxpayer dollars, too, right? So if you're spending $108,000, but we can make that last three months versus just a month, we get more bang for the bucks. I was looking at it from a financial standpoint as well.
You know, just, just like, just like everything else we do, though, prior to the budget, you know, when we sit down and we do our budget for the audience, we go, we look at a lot of data, you know, and we have a proposal for some, an expenditure that we've never had before. We look at justification for that. You know, Tom makes a point, let's, let's develop a plan. Well, can we get some idea of where we want to go with this data before we even sit down at a budget meeting and make a determination of $108,000 versus something else? Because we all know that, that $108,000 is going to be weighed against other expenditures that we have. So is there a possibility we can get information from the consultant, but also as a group, maybe come up with some plan as to how we want to use that data? So it's used well. I mean, Alderman Belzak makes a real good point, you know, what do we want to do with that?
Yeah, I mean, that's really what was talked about during the work session. I think the, you know, the issue is, even if the, if the council includes X amount of dollars in the budget, doesn't, and, you know, let's say, say the council allocates $150,000, it could be for, you know, to carry out the council's ultimate plan, it doesn't have to be this specific testing. So the city council certainly has the authority to include money in the budget, and then, again, as another step that the council's aware of, anything over $5,000, even if it's in the budget, comes back to the city council for approval. So, certainly, the council, I mean, every year, the city council includes now $500,000 in the event there's economic development activities that, you know, are need to be undertaken. City council could certainly do the same, you know, with some money for the fight against Stergenics. It would work the same way. So, I agree, though, there should be, you know, if you're going to do a study, then you should look a couple steps ahead at what you're going to do with that, so.
Okay.
But those are the options.
So we have some direction. Alderman Vaughn?
Just two things really quick. For the indoor testing, can we instruct the consultants to get a list of products that they use on the inside for cleaning, for, at the schools, like, a list of products that they use that may give off alarms to the detectors? They might, the detectors might pick up some stuff from like bleach or anything, you know, where, where, just a list of products that they can analyze and say, hey, this could probably, you know, give our detectors, you know?
And again, that was talked about during the work session. One of the issues that the consultant is having now, they are testing for levels of ethylene oxide, and they did testing for Willowbrook and Burr Ridge. Both of those, they, the results are showing levels above the EPA allowable levels. But, but the real issue now is, how much of that is attributable to Stergenics versus some of the things you're talking about? And the consultant now is working on a way to differentiate how much might be attributable to things like that, so I'll follow up with them again and see how they're, they're doing that. Because Willowbrook is starting their next round of testing very soon. I think they postponed it a few days because of the weather, and they're going to be doing the everyday testing also for a month period. So, you know, once that testing is completed and we can see those results, hopefully we'll have a better idea of this differential.
One more, do you think it would be advantageous to us to coordinate with Willowbrook, to have our containers out at the same time, same day? Because the stuff goes where the wind blows, right? So if it's not blowing west, I mean, if it's blowing west, then it's not coming east. So, you know, would it be advantageous for us to coordinate with Willowbrook to...
The consultant is the same consultant that we're going...
They're moving ahead, so, we're not moving ahead.
Yeah, we're not, we're not up to that, that step yet.
But I think the coordination does come in where the testing spots are, because if, you know, if, if we were going to test, you know, here for results, we wouldn't need to test at the police department, just as an example. You know, we would pick up levels here, and then, you know, the experts in this would deduct from that where the, where the other levels might be. That's why, again, you know, some of the testing levels that we talked about were, were in a good line, where maybe Willowbrook didn't have a sample taken. So those kind of efforts, we certainly would like to coordinate. But, yeah, I mean, there was a time when the council wanted to be on our own, and now we're talking about coordination. So that should be something I think we talk about, when we talk about what is the outset of this, what is the game plan?
We could split the bill, maybe.
With, with our neighboring communities, because certainly this type of fight needs to be done, you know, in...
Together.
Together with our communities.
Willowbrook has been a tremendous resource, you know, of information and, and help with, to us, in, in guiding us in what, in, with the consultant that they're using and now we're going to be using.
Yeah, Alderman Lester makes a good point. Just imagine if you spilled some water, right, and you just check in one point that has water, but as you go further from where the water got spilled, and it's more or less, you can sort of pinpoint the source. So maybe that could help as well, so, makes a very good point.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
So if you have, if you have a water spilled in this location, right, and you have a test underwater here, and as you move out, it's less, 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 but by being, maybe testing further away, we can sort of trace back the source, you know, this, this location's very concentrated, this is less, 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 right? Where if the source was, say, Downers Grove, it'd be more concentrated in Darien, less than Willowbrook. Remember, the question we had earlier is, are they really the source? Could we bring down the source of Stergenics being ethylene oxide?
Much of it.
Correct. So if you have a line of 10 sensors, one being here, one being another 10 foot, 100 foot down, if it's getting weaker or stronger, you can sort of more accurately pinpoint potentially where it's coming from. So if it's getting stronger towards Darien, maybe we got a source here. Is it getting weaker towards here and stronger towards Willowbrook? That sort of maybe confirms more location as well.
You know, GHD...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I was just making the point, Lester made a very interesting point.
That's what's been so troubling about this, as we've read the information from the consultants for Willowbrook, there may be more sources of ethylene oxide, not just Stergenics. So that really confounds the situation and makes it even harder to understand and get your arms around it.
I could tell you, there is a website that I look at periodically through the DuPage County website, and it goes basically to the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, I believe, and it shows you every entity in your community, in every community, that fills out a Tier 2 report. And, you know, you look at some communities, you look at Darien, really, it's, it's a couple of the gas stations, and Home Depot. So it leads, in terms of, you know, us moving forward with ordinances and things, hopefully that's a little bit of a relief that we don't have those types of facilities, you know, in our small industrial districts.
Yeah, no, it can definitely come from anywhere, but one of the arguments I always joke around is that you can have a glass of wine at 5% alcohol, a beer at 8%, a shot at 40, and isopropyl rubbing alcohol, they're all alcohol, right? Which you're not going to drink isopropyl because it's so concentrated. So I think when we're looking at, you could have multiple sources, but we're looking at the concentration of ethylene oxide at that source. So when I make the argument to residents, you're looking at how strong it is, so, and that's what we're trying to verify with testing, so, that's all.
Okay, we've given direction to the administrators, so let's move on to department information. Police Department Chief, any report?
No report.
All righty, and Municipal Services, Mr. Gombek?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Do you have any que, do we have any questions for our, our department heads that are here this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I could have mentioned this on the communications, I do chair this with Mr. Gombek in his office. I happen to have a lot of friends who live in the Hinswood subdivision, and they have told me during the snowstorms that what they found highly unusual was that they would drive on their streets and find them icy, and they would pull onto a Darien street and find it clean. So they said, whatever you guys are doing, that stuff you're using that looks like forks, fork marks going down on the road, compliments to the Darien Public Works, because even people from Hinswood acknowledge the fact that our streets look a lot nicer than theirs.
So why do they want to stay unincorporated?
Some of them want to come on board with us.
And I... Women's, yeah.
And I'd gotten a resident who had somebody call me, so, older lady had son call me up, say her street's not plowed. I didn't say, I hadn't said a word. As I'm coming back home, before I came to make a phone call, street's, street's clean already, so, like 10:15 on a Saturday morning.
Yeah.
That's all psychic, we know.
Got some lottery numbers.
And he took all the credit.
He took all the credit.
Actually, Dan told me that, when I go out and shovel, he waits till I'm done, and I go in, and then he comes around and dumps it all again.
Let's move on to the Treasurers' report, Treasurer Cor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 181919, in the amount of $188,070.86 from the listed funds, payroll for the period ended January 31st, in the amount of $258,755.08, for a total to be approved of $446,825.94.
We have a motion to approve Alderman's shower, seconded by Alderman Marques. Any discussion?
I got a quick one, Mayor. I wasn't here for your work session, I apologize. Mr. Gombek, repair part for truck 101, $2,900 part, do we know? I think, I think I'm starting to see that 101 come up, you know, a lot lately.
Who's the payee?
Payee would be Henderson Products Incorporated.
It's either one of the trucks, or is that snow pile?
It just seems that 101 is hitting me all the time, I don't know why.
It say 101 on there?
It says 101.
Is it 101? Okay.
Great for repair part 101.
Not sure if that's the EGR.
So actually, it was $3,000.
It was a cylinder, Dan, cylinder CS.
It's probably the hydraulic cylinder, Dan. Oh, boy.
$2,900. Apparently, they shipped it to us, and we probably did the repair ourselves in-house.
Yes.
Is that an older, is that an older truck?
I'm not sure what 101 is exactly.
Dan, is that because of the weather? Is that weather related?
You know what, it could be weather related, you know, what exactly, when, was it the pistons? Was that one of the trucks that's outside? I couldn't tell you for sure at this point.
It's in there, it's got their, got their hoses, too, but it's on, sorry, okay.
Any other questions for the Treasurer?
I got, thanks.
That's it? Okay. Turn the roll, please.
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Bellzak?
Aye.
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 Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes, one aye.
The warrant has been approved. Let's move, Treasurer Cor, do you want to go over the revenue expenditure report?
Yep, revenue and expenditure report for the eight months ended December 31st reflects general fund year-to-date revenue, $11,254,624, expenditures $9,24,823, current balance of $3,434,724.
The, the warrant has been approved, let's move, Treasurer Corn, you want to go over the revenue expenditure report?
Yep, revenue and expenditure report for the eight months ended December 31st reflects general fund year-to-date revenue, $11,254,624, expenditures $9,24,823, current balance of $3,434,751. Water fund year-to-date revenue $5,258,866, expenditures of $4,97,762, per current balance of $2,191,729. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue $385,564, expenditures of $194,100, current balance of $580,903. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue $3,456,160, expenditures of $1,406,77, current balance of $2,169,527. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $232,902, expenditures of $3,958,622 for a current balance of $5,396,326.
Any questions for the Treasurer? Let's move on to standing committee reports, Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's our last meeting, Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the November 26th and the December 26th Municipal Services Committee, and sent those to the Clerk's Office. And our next meeting is at 6:30 here in the Council Chambers on February 25th, 2019.
That's February 25th?
February 25th, correct.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight's Admin Finance meeting was canceled due to a lack of a quorum, and our next Admin Finance meeting will be held on Monday, March 4th at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room. And our first committee of the whole Admin Finance for the Budget Meeting will start on Wednesday, February 20th at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers.
Quick question, and this is for Mr. Corn. I noticed you sent out eight quotes for consultant for audit, and you mentioned that only two came back. What was the reasoning for the other six not giving quotes back? That seems very odd.
Well, it was part of, it's supposed to be part of the discussion tonight, if you attended the meeting tonight. We could have had that discussion, we will have that discussion the next time we have the meeting. But we sent out eight proposals, my guess would be, because we've been getting pretty good price from our current provider, all eight of them did indicate they were going to quote, but when you go out for the RFP, you do provide them with the financial statements, so they see what we've been paying, and my guess is, it was just based on the amount that we've been paying, that they probably couldn't anticipate they'd be able to, to beat or match the price, would be my best guess. The one firm that did quote, quoted higher, they're a smaller firm, they don't have quite the resources. The individual that would be in charge actually worked for our current accounting firm five years ago, but left there, he was a manager on our account and actually was very, very proficient, he moved to this other firm, and he was interested in proposing, and they did propose, they came out higher, but they don't have quite the resources of our present firm, so.
Okay, yeah, it just seemed like an odd number, as in Municipal Services, we get like 80, 90%, so, that's what just cleared at me, so.
And I apologize for not being at that meeting tonight as well. But if those eight RFPs are seeing what we've spent, and they can see the longevity and stuff, and there are, there's a theory about changing up your audit, get a fresh set of eyes on it, wouldn't those, you know, companies also be anticipating us wanting to possibly get a new set of eyes in there and still go ahead and, and submit, or no? I, I, I think that perception is more the public's perception than the actual accounting firm perception. I know my own experience, I mean, I experienced it quite a bit, we did quite a bit of work for not-for-profits, not necessarily municipalities, but not-for-profits, and they would bring up that periodically, that some of their members and that would bring it up, but they said, we really like the service we're getting from you guys, so we don't really plan on changing. So I think it's more an outward perception than a perception that the, the firms themselves have.
Okay.
And Mike, in addition to many of our audits, there is a new set of eyes every year?
Oh, right, I mean, they do rotate their personnel, they've rotated partners, there is a mandatory rotation of partners in charge, and, again, that's the one thing I do like about the firm we're using now, I mean, they are a very good-sized firm, and they're very big in the municipal services audit, so they, it's not like we're doing one or two municipal services audits, and the rest of the time we're dealing with manufacturers of widgets type of things, so they see our exact line of work, so, I mean, I do have a lot of respect for them, they have provided a lot of good service to us, they've never charged us anything extra, even though Julie periodically calls them with questions, they are allowed to charge us an extra 150 to 200 dollars an hour for providing those services, and over their entire relationship with us, they've never done that, so, again, it's been a good relationship, but it is good to go out for these proposals and see what else is out there. The other firms that, the other firm that does a few municipalities, they only did about three or four of them, and they were smaller ones on the south side, so, again, just not the breadth of experience that our current auditors have, and, and they haven't given me any particular reason for being unhappy with them, they've been very responsive in my mind. Again, my apologies for tonight, thank you. Accepted.
Look, look who's being gregarious here. Okay, what, we've reached the point where we can, do you have questions, comments, again?
I'm sorry, me again, sorry. We do have a police pension board meeting this Thursday night, February 7th at 7 o'clock, in the police training room, that'll take us through December 31st, not expecting a very good investment performance, hope, thank God, things have turned around quite a bit in January, but I would expect the report I will be giving you based on the experience as of December 31st won't be very positive, but that meeting will be Thursday night.
It probably will have leveled out, because we've been having good experience, and then December's been a, you know, a brush change.
December was horrible, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it won't take us down for the whole year, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think you're expecting that.
Uh, I, I, based on the financials that I've seen.
The way he's dodging that.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying from an investment performance standpoint, but the actual assets invested in the account, I saw the December 31st statements on the agenda for this meeting Thursday night, and the overall assets that we have invested have decreased, because naturally we are paying out pensions, and we've paid out, I believe it's 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars during the current year, as well as a weak performance, so unless you have a really strong performance, it is hard to make that up, so.
So that's how much we're paying out now currently, 1.4?
Well, it's over that, that's through the eight months through December.
Okay, interesting. I, I hadn't thought about that, that we, we are currently paying out.
Well, that's why our contribution has been going up every year, actually until about two years ago, the amount that we were putting in, based on what the actuary determined, was sufficient to match what our payouts were. Last year, for the first time, it finally flipped, where the payouts are actually more than we've been putting in, so you had to re, rely completely on the investment, you have to raise the contribution and rely on the investment performance.
Okay. Did anyone in the audience want to address the council on the items on the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay, then let's move on to old business, and there being no old business, I'll move to the consent agenda, and thankfully, there's only items A through D tonight.
Municipal Services.
Not, not A through NN or QQ, as we usually have. Item A is a motion to approve the Darien Chamber of Commerce 19th Annual Darien Dash, which will take place on May 19th. It'll be a 10K, 5K, and one-mile walk, and authorize the Chief of Police to finalize the details of this event with the Chamber of Commerce. Item B is a motion to approve the use of the right half of the following streets of the Darien Dash, which begins, and I'm not going to read them all, it goes through Hins, it goes through the subdivision of Hinsbrook, and it's the same route that the, the race has gone every year. It starts at Darien Community Park and goes westward and winds through the Hinsbrook subdivision. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposal for analytical soil testing fees from Testing Service Corporation at the proposed unit prices for certain waste, for certain ways for a period of May 1 through April 30th, that's another one of our annual fees. The next item is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a variation to the Darien zoning regulations for 313 Roger Road. Do I have a motion to approve these items? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny, the role, please.
Alderman Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Quistick?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn? Aye.
The items have been approved, there, the next item on the agenda is new business, and there is no new business items this evening, so I'll move directly to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Alderman Marques?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. My wife came home yesterday with a game that the Historical Society found in their archives. It's a monopoly board, and it's called the Game of Darien, and it's a monopoly board laid out like the city of Darien, where the one corner is City Hall, and this is the Park District, and the Police Department, et cetera, et cetera. And if you go, and the streets are all businesses, you must have seen this, because this came out in 1982, and they dug this up, and I know where they dug this up, but on the one side, you have the administration, I think Al Stromalia was mayor, and they list the council, and then they list
What year was that, '82 you said?
'82. And then they list the aldermen, they list all the, what they call key individuals in the city of Darien, first name on the list is Gert and Fred Coit, and then they list all the citizens of the year. It is really a unique game to see, and it's in pristine condition, and they're going to have it on display at the Historical Society, so if you get a chance, get over there and take a look at it, because it really is kind of fun. Obviously, they gave this away to people who were involved in the city up to that point. I don't know, maybe you're aware.
Wow, that would be, we, we should check with residents to find out if they still have the game.
Yeah, if it's, because obviously they made enough of them where certain people got them, and they had theirs, so it's called the game, it's called the Game of Darien, and it looks like a monopoly board.
How clever, how very clever.
We should bring it back for our anniversary this year, right?
Yeah, we should.
Speaking of anniversaries, I, I broached, I broached the subject of, of planning the, a 50th anniversary party, or celebration, I should say, it doesn't have to be a party, but a celebration. I broached the subject to our Citizen of the Year Committee. This is a very, these individuals are, have been dedicated committee who have worked hard, and they know a lot about the residents in Darien and, and the community, and I've, I've challenged them to be the committee that works on this, and I'm waiting for them to make a decision and get back to me. But the reason I ask them is because they're a small group, I figure if we get a very large group, we'll never get anything done, you know, and, and so, I, I know they'll be asking for input from, from all of us as to what we perceive is the proper celebration for the 50th celebration. December 13th is our 50th anniversary. We were born as a city, December 13th, 1969, and I think we deserve a celebration, yes.
Did you see my picture that I posted on Facebook from 1990?
I know, I saw my picture there, the 25th anniversary, my goodness, did we look young.
We looked good, didn't we?
Yeah, yes. Any other announcements?
Any, any discussion regarding the email that was sent out from Bonnie to you, or from me to Bonnie, Bonnie to you, regarding a candidate, it seems that that candidate did have longevity?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I don't think it's appropriate to be discussing it here, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's
I'll, I'll be glad to discuss it with you after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If there's no other announcements, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Promote.
Alderman Vaughn, seconded by, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to comment on the agenda?
Oh, come on, come on.
Do you speak in general?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought I gave you that opportunity and nobody wanted to speak, okay.
On the agenda? Not on the agenda.
Oh, 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 okay.
So Alderman Marques, a game night, your house?
That would be so cute to see that.
I'm Stacy Tantillo, I am a, oh, God, I don't know, 14 year, something like that, resident of Darien. Alderman Vaughn, thank you so much for getting Hinsdale South recognized, it was long overdue. For so long, Hinsdale South has been regarded as the ugly stepchild of District 86, and far from it, we're Cinderella. It's a great school, my daughter's junior, she's had a stellar experience at Hinsdale South, it's a really good school, and it breaks my heart to think of what could come down the pike if we don't get this referendum passed. It's very real, they're not scared tactics, those cuts will happen if this referendum doesn't get passed. Want to see kids in the street? Take away football, take away swimming, take away dance line, drama club, French club, habitat for humanity club, wounded warriors club, those are all on the chopping block to go if this referendum doesn't get passed. You know I'm passionate about this, I addressed you all last November, on the eve of the election, I'm coming to you a little bit sooner this time around, I'm just asking you please, touch your constituents, go to the D86 Vote Yes website, go to the District 86 website, you will get every single answer to any of your questions that you have. And let me remind you that this is not just a East of Cass Avenue issue, this is a city of Darien issue, so whether you're on the side of Cass where your constituents' kids goes to DGS, it's still going to impact Darien, because if Hinsdale South de-escalates, Darien de-escalates, our poverty values de-escalate, we all know that, it's a fact. Those people are out there again, trying to undermine us, and they're being mean, and they're being vicious, and why they're like this, I don't know, if they want to do whatever they want to do, they have no answers as to what would be better than to get this referendum passed. We know Illinois is a hot mess, we have the highest taxes in the country, we get it, but my house, that's roughly valued at 330,000, my taxes would go up about 180 dollars. A lot to ask to invest in our community, so I'm pleased, I urge you, I urge you, our two mayoral candidates, I urge you, put it on your platform, this is so important.
It is.
Third times the charm, right?
Well, you know, Stacy, we, we have a viewing audience too, so you, by being here and speaking, you are speaking to that audience too, so it's not just these, the, the individuals in this room, so hopefully the residents watching the meeting will, will take, take your advice.
I think so, last November, my mother is a widow, lives in the Grange where I was born and raised, she has never once been loaned the tax dollars that go to the schools because she knows what it means to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, whoops, I, I forgot to remind you guys of three minutes again, I'm, I'm always forgetting to do that.
You know, I apologize for the three minutes, I brought my wrong speech, I had, I had a different one that I timed out, so it wasn't going to go over three minutes, and I forgot that one, so.
You're not going to do it again, are you?
No.
Oh, okay.
But from that, an important point I missed, so, I just want to make sure you guys hear this, South students and taxpayers represent 35% of the District 86 school base, okay? South will receive 43% of the total referendum dollars into the schools directly. That's a pretty good, good deal, in my opinion, and a $500,000 house will incur 283 dollars a year in taxes, that's probably three dinners out, a $250,000 house, 136 dollars, so, and